James Meyer.
Aziz Hassan.
Norma Droning.
Tara Franco.
All right, our alternate is actually out tonight, so we don't, well, just, we have a quorum, so we're good. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Couple announcements, just as we get going here. Number one, if you get scheduled for a public hearing for next month, or you have to come back for another review next month, in the event, I've never thought I'd have to talk about snow in November, but in the event of snow for December or January at any point, if town hall is closed, you have to listen, if town hall is closed, then our meeting is canceled. We do not reschedule. Everything that would be on that meeting agenda would just get pushed to the following meeting, the following month's meeting. In the event of snow, by the way, please, and you are scheduled for a public hearing, please make sure that your sign is clear and it's visible, and if you are, anything that you wrote on the sign, if it gets washed off, please make sure that it gets reprinted on there. Using a Sharpie works really well, it does stay on there a lot better than some of the other markers we've seen where it washes off. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 10th. Today is, today's date is 11/12/13, so we have kind of a special meeting here. All right, let's getting right into our agenda here. Item number one is a decision, Appeal 3640, Stelter. Shawn Stelter, 19 Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for proposed in-ground pools pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Who would like to talk to this? You're going to read from this version, I'll just, just a couple titles.
Oh, you want me, okay. This is Appeal number 3640. Applicant is Shawn Stelter. The project is, applicant is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan. Whereas applicant has applied for zoning board for a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 25th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October 8th, 2013, and, did we have multiple, okay, just one, okay. And whereas, this is an application by Shawn Stelter, 19 Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, who is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance. The applicant's property consists of 1.1 acres located in R1 zoning district and is improved by a single family dwelling. This is a shed, there is a shed in the rear yard which was previously issued an area variance by this board. The applicant now wants to place an in-ground pool in the rear yard and is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance based upon the location he has selected for the in-ground pool. In short, the applicant told this board that the placement of the in-ground pool in the rear yard is hampered by the septic field in the rear yard and the presence of trees and several sinkholes in the rear yard. Therefore, Mr. Stelter believes that the only feasible place for the in-ground pool is the right side of the rear of the lot. Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance is entitled Private Swimming Pools and Tennis Cords, and Section 194-95(c) provides as follows. (c) setback requirements. All swimming pools and/or tennis courts shall be set back from lot lines at least 25 foot, 25 feet from side and rear lot lines. Such pools and/or tennis courts shall not be located in any required front yard. Upon the board's further questioning of the applicant, it was revealed that the applicant desired to place a four-foot wide walkway patio around the in-ground pool. The board advised the applicant that he would need a variance to include the patio. Therefore, the first review in July 2013, the board told the applicant that the board was concerned about the size, 39 feet by 44 feet, and placement of the proposed in-ground pool. The board further advised applicant that variance of pool was rarely granted and with, only with proof of a compelling hardship. At the board's second review in August 2013, the board went through, at some length, various options that the applicant proposed to reduce the requested variance size of the in-ground pool, location of the in-ground pool, removal of trees, altering the deck, placement of the pool fence, placement of the street privacy fence, et cetera. The applicant stated that he would further consider all these options and be ready, at the third review in September 2013, to further discuss the same with the board. At the board's third review in September 2013, the applicant presented the board with a new survey and had two changes to his proposed in-ground pool. The first was reduce the pool size to 28 feet by 44 feet, keeping the organic look at the applicant's request, and to place the stairs inside the in-ground pool to reduce the area, to produce the variance requested from 15 feet to 10 feet. The proposed in-ground pool was reduced to 28 feet wide to achieve a 10-foot sideline variance. The board pointed out that the applicant had the option to build a standard-sized pool of 20 feet by 40 feet, which would be placed without the need for an area variance. Once again, the board explored with the options, what the options were with applicant to obtain a full understanding of the applicant's alternative in order to minimize or even eliminate the area variance for this in-ground pool. At the third review, the applicant reiterated his request for a four-foot wide walkway which would require a 50-feet sideline setback. In addition, the applicant explained his proposed pool fence and landscaping to the board. Finally, a public hearing was requested and scheduled for October 8th, 2013. No one spoke at the public hearing. The public hearing was closed and the decision of this board was reserved. The board had to review the five factors in the balancing test under New York State Town Law Section 267(b) in evaluating the applicant's requested area variance. The 15-foot sideline variance for the applicant's proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance. Whereas an undesirable, number one, whereas an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. This board is very concerned that a detriment to a nearby property will be created by the granting of this area variance, as a bustling, noisy in-ground pool will only be a short distance away from the neighboring property. In addition, granting this variance would set a negative precedent for the other pool owners requesting the same relief and would create a similar detriment to their nearby properties. Number two, whereas the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. This is a key factor for this board in reviewing the applicant's requested area variance of 15 feet. It became abundantly clear to this board that the three reviews and one public hearing, that the applicant had various alternatives here that the applicant could pursue to achieve installing an in-ground pool other than requesting a 15-foot sideline variance. Among the applicant's alternatives to pursue are reduction in pool size, adjusting the pool shape and location, removing the pool walkway, removing certain trees, pushing the pool, the pool back in the rear yard, adjusting the pool with respect to the deck, et cetera. Number three, whereas the requested area variance is substantial, this is another key factor for this board. This board has only granted one or two area variances from the required 25-foot setback recited in Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance. This board requires a strong showing under New York State Town Law Section 267(b) in order to grant such an area variance for a swimming pool. Number four, whereas the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Hence, the placing of an in-ground pool so close to the sign will have, will have an adverse effect and impact on the physical condition in both the neighborhood and the zoning district. The next-door neighbors will be adversely impacted by the in-ground pool and so will the zoning district. Once again, an in-ground pool is the center of a busy backyard all summer long, so the 25-foot setback in the zoning ordinance was enacted for just this reason, to reduce the impact of pools on neighboring properties. Number five, whereas the alleged difficulty was self-created, no question here, the alleged difficulty, the 15-feet sideline variance is self-created, as the applicant need not build an in-ground pool and suddenly want build up with no or very minor sideline area variance needed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby denies this application for a 15-foot sideline variance, area variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the Town of East Fiskel zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Resolution seconded by zoning board member.
Second.
Your second.
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Tara.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right. Let me guess, that's Pam, so she's got those couple of minor changes.
It's 4-0, right?
Yeah, 4-0. All right, our second item is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3648, Mustakis. George Mustakis of East Fiskel Provisions is requesting a three-foot sideline variance proposed 10-foot by 40-foot storage container to be located on the western side of this building at 567 Old Hopewell Road, Hopewell Junction, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Ball in favor?
I thought this was a decision. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing.
Great, this is one where we had to actually wait for the planning board to take action, so my understanding is that the planning board has taken action?
Yes.
Or they did a review of it.
They did, and they didn't have an issue with it.
So, we are now at liberty to close this up, so are there any other questions or comments from board members before I go open up to the public? This is the container that was being proposed on the side for, to store the emergency generator to provide meals and things like that during incidents where there's no power. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the request by East Fiskel Provisions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Shall move.
Second, ball in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
And?
This is Appeal number 3648. Applicant is John, George Mustakis. Applicant is requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed 10 feet by 40 feet storage container to be located on the western side of this building, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. The location is 567 Old Hopewell Road, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant has applied for the zoning board for a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed 10 feet by 40 feet storage container, 12-foot sideline variance for an existing 12 feet by 18-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 25th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals had a, held a public hearing on October 8th, 2013, and adjourned until November 12th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as this is more of a community service, because during acts of God, the applicant makes food for the first responder, utility company, employs residents without power, et cetera. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the proposed location is near where the utility connect, connect to the, utilities connect to the building and their standby generator will be in this container and is also near the door to the main building, which will make it easier for the employees to get in and out of the building and into the storage unit in bad weather. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, as applicant has said, that it will soften the site with landscaping to shield it from neighbors and old Hopewell Road. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by George Mustakis of East Fiskel Provisions, 567 Old Hopewell Road, Hopewell Junction, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use, who is requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed 10 feet by 40 feet storage container pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Resolution seconded by zoning board member.
Oh, yes, is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Tara.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, the motion carries. All right, item number three is a public hearing. This is the first public hearing for this one. Appeal 3647, Sama, Dr. Michael Sama, 15 North Winter Park Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot rear line variance for an existing detached pool house, an 11-foot sideline variance for a barbecue station, a 43-foot rear line, and 10-foot sideline variance for an existing swing set, and a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot retaining wall pursuant to Section 194-107 and 194-98 of the zoning ordinance.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, one of the things, we did go through this last week, we went through all of the different improvements that had been made to the backyard with, where the owner was not aware of the requirement to get building permits for some of these structures, but it's one of the things that we talked about, Mike, was that we wanted to see what the impact to the neighbors was.
Right.
All right, so this is what you're providing us?
Yeah, what you have in front of you is a packet, they're all the same. On the backside of the packet is a copy of the map that was provided as part of the initial application, the survey map, and on it, I've actually kind of highlighted a couple of locations. What we have is, the photos you have for you, a total of five, are effectively view shed photos, and on the plan, you see directional view arrows to kind of point out 1, 2, and 3. Make it nice and easy. I will point out that the one, the biggest item and the biggest issue that seemed to be of concern in the last month we were before you was the issue of place set.
Right.
And we had kind of a half little snapshot of it, so you'll find, if you go back to photo four, there's the place set.
It's in photo, it's in view two.
And it might be in view two, but, right.
Yeah.
The whole sheet match there is.
So, it gives me the perspective of what the neighbor's looking at, really, a neighbor's not really seeing it.
Right, if you'll notice, this is actually kind of hidden in the corner.
Right.
So, what happens is, when you, when you look at the perspective toward the rear, which is really photo one, as mentioned, that house behind Dr. sits kind of low.
Hmm.
Actually, there's the fence, there's a rise, there must have been an old stone wall there, a fair amount of brush, and then it drops off. So, there's, these were taken today, by virtue of the snow on the ground.
Sort of sets the timeline.
But, leaves are off the trees, and it kind of gives you an idea as to, as to worst-case conditions.
Right, no, I appreciate that. You're right, with, with leaves on the trees, it's going to be even more screen, so this is at its worst.
Yeah, and photo two kind of reinforces that, where if you look, you're looking in the back left-hand corner of the lot, and you'll see kind of, there's a cluster of trees, effectively, and you'll notice the kind of the distance that the adjoining neighbor's homes are to the left, it's a pretty significant distance. The other thing I guess I want to point out too is, is we're looking for a variance for a swing set. It's aesthetically is why, it's probably could be defined as a little bit more of a swing set, it kind of is a little more of a fitting with the area, it's not, you know, a couple of.
One of the things we were concerned about was, did it have a bright yellow slide? Did it have a bright green roof to it? You know, things like that.
Right.
That's what we were more concerned about, that's what we wanted to see, the pictures.
Right.
Something like that would make it much more visible to the neighbors.
Right.
And it's kind of, looking at figure four, basically, it blends in with the background.
Yeah, it does.
I have no problem with the snow and the.
All that kind of helps, yeah.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Dr. Sama, 15 North Winter Park Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot rear line variance for an existing detached pool house, an 11-foot sideline variance for a barbecue station, a 43-foot rear line, and 10-foot sideline variance for an existing swing set, and a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot retaining wall? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Shall move.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reference to Appeal number 3647, the applicant, Michael Sama, requesting a two-foot rear line variance for an existing detached pool house, 11-foot sideline variance for a barbecue station, a 43-foot rear line, and a 10-foot sideline variance for an existing swing set, and a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot retaining wall pursuant to Sections 194-107 and 194-98 of the zoning ordinance located at 15 North Winter Park Drive, Hopewell Junction, and resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a two-foot rear line variance for an existing detached pool house, 11-foot sideline variance for the barbecue station, a 43-foot rear line, and a 10-foot sideline variance for an existing swing set, and a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot retaining wall pursuant to Sections 194-107 and 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, and whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October 30th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November 12th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the improvements that were made on the property are aesthetically pleasing, result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the dwelling is set on the top of a slope and the structures are required to be in the rear of the dwelling. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area of variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, as the improvements are aesthetically pleasing. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Michael Sama, 15 North Winter Park Drive, Hopewell Junction, for a two-foot rear line variance for an existing detached pool house, 11-foot sideline variance for the barbecue station, a 43-foot rear line, and 10-foot sidelines variance for an existing swing set, and a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot retaining wall pursuant to Sections 194-107 and 194-108 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following express conditions. The applicant must apply for all necessary building permits within 30 days of the filing of this resolution with the town clerk, and, second, the swing set shall be granted a variance to remain in this location on applicant's property for two years in the filing of this resolution with the town clerk. Within this two-year period, the applicant, if so desired, can reapply to this board for an extension of said two-year period, for an extension period to be set by the board at that time. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the owner or applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Tara.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Thank you.
Mike, do you want some of these back, in case you need it for something else?
I gave mine to Pam.
Yeah, we don't need some.
Pam's got it.
Yeah. We all need 10 copies in our file.
All right, item number four, Appeal 3649, Need Pools for Lyons. Need Pools, representing John Lyons, is requesting a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio around an existing in-ground pool at 5 West Barrett Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to Section 194-93 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Shall move.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right, as we discussed, you had a building permit for the pool, the, so the pool went in fine, the pool's within all the required setbacks, when, apparently, when you filed for the building permit, there was no patio shown on the survey, so the building department didn't give guidance at that point to tell you that, be careful where you put the patio.
Exactly.
The applicant has gone ahead and constructed it, but, you know, again, because the pool itself is within this required setbacks, and it's not a substantial sidewalk or patio that's been requested and been actually built there, when you went to get the, when the building department went to do the final inspection, that's when they noticed that it was, ends up being a little too close to the sideline variance. So, are there any questions or comments from board members at this time?
No, I'm good.
Is anyone here to speak for or against John Lyons requesting a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio around an existing in-ground pool at 5 West Barrett Hill Road, Hopewell Junction? Yep?
Yes, only adjacent neighbors should ask you.
All right, I'm going to ask the gentleman from Need Pools to step aside, and you can come up to the microphone, thank you.
Hi, we're just curious, how does this affect us as the, as the neighbor to Ms. Lyons?
Okay, which, which side of the property are you on?
To Barrett Hill Road, to the left.
So, you're to the.
It's on the other side of the property.
Right.
Where he's putting the patio, and the pool's already in.
Right.
And, and the pa, actually, the patio is as well, so.
Okay, so this doesn't affect us at all? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's still your neighbor, but it's not on your side of his property.
It's on the other side.
It's on the other side, correct.
You're not going to be affected any more than you are by it already being there, or just, since he didn't quite meet the setback requirements.
Right.
It just indicates that it's, as built, it's going to be okay if we approve it, if not, then he'll have to take two feet away from it, but, that's the issue.
But our property line stays as is, correct?
It does not affect property lines at all.
Actually, let me have you come up, one second, we'll let you take a look at the survey. We have it right here. All right, so, this is his property, here's the, here's his driveway.
Okay.
All right, so you're probably here.
Yeah, middle fence, I'm over here.
Okay, so here's the pool, and here's the patio that's in question.
Okay.
All right, so.
It changes the property line.
Doesn't change the property line, he's, the house is still 37 and a half feet from your property line.
So, it's on this side, is what you're saying, is that correct?
It's on, it's on the other side. You're right.
This is where the pool is.
Right.
And here's the patio.
Okay.
And this is the variance he's requesting, because it's so close to the property line.
Oh, okay, it's up against the back.
Right.
How long has the patio been there?
Okay, just.
If it hasn't bothered you yet, most likely it won't.
No problem.
I know, it's a little bit trite answer, but that's, that's really what it comes down to, property lines, nothing else changes.
Okay.
It's just the law has a lot of setback requirements to make sure neighbors aren't infringed upon when you do something.
All right, exactly.
Okay?
Okay.
Could you please sign the sheet up there?
Just so we have the spelling of your name right, thank you. Anybody else?
Just printed.
No, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Tara.
So, okay, second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep.
Appeal number 3649, applicant John Lyons. Name of project, applicant is requesting a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio around an existing in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-93 of the zoning ordinance. Location is 5 West Barrett Hill Road and Hopewell Junction, tax map number 6556-01-252801. This, zoning district R1. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio around an existing in-ground pool, whereas this application, this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October 30th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November 12th, 2013, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the pool and the patio surrounding it are located in the rear of the dwelling and cannot be seen by neighbors. The result can be achieved without a variance if the installer makes the patio smaller, although it's not, it would not be as aesthetically pleasing. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by John Lyons, 5 West Barrett Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, for a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio around an existing in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-93 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed.
the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant or owner. Is there a second?
Did you say yes? So, second.
All right, let's not fight over this. Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item number five, appeal three six five zero, Wade and Gretchen Cornet. They actually, after our discussion at the last meeting, they actually withdrew their application, so I need a motion to refund all the five dollars to them.
So moved.
Second. On paper? Aye. Aye. All right. Item number six, appeal three six five one, Signa, Salvatore Signa, sixty-six Satterridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nineteen-foot sideline variance for an existing eleven-hundred square foot sport court and a two-hundred-and-forty square foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five C of the zoning ordinance. This variance is contingent upon the planning board approving a lot line alignment, realignments between Dr. Signa and his next-door neighbors. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, is Dr. Signa here?
No, I don't see him.
Okay.
That's probably...
Maybe he thought they had to make the other approval first? Do we have that idea?
I don't know, but if there's any neighbors here, let's go through the, through the exercise here. There is a significant sport court that Dr. Signa installed, probably about six or seven years ago was the best of information that we probably got. And so we wanted, and he's asking to be able to keep this sport court. It actually encroaches on his neighbor's property, not just needing just a variance, but it actually goes on the neighbor's property. So he's actually before the, the planning board to get a lot line realignment where he's going to, him and his neighbor are going to swap certain pieces of their property. This board will not be able to close our public hearing until the planning board takes their action because technically he doesn't own the land that he's asking for an appeal on at this moment. The planning board is still doing their due diligence and their review of the, of the application, so we just wanted to get a sense of whether any of the neighbors had any objection to it, which is why we agreed to let it go to a public hearing. So with that being said, is there, are there any neighbors who wish to offer any comment on this application? Seeing none, I certainly want, I think comments, I think we need to just get on the record because this is the public hearing, is there is still some concern about the use of lights and the, and the fact that there are large lights in the bathroom?
Yeah, I was just going to make a suggestion that we adjourn it and leave the public hearing open so that we, yeah, I think he needs to be here to address some of these concerns that we may have.
Right. So, but, so lights?
Put it on for a second, go.
That might be a good case, too.
If he comes with a medical, we can ask to reopen, all right? I don't know.
We have to adjourn it to next month anyway, so it's not the end of the world. Again, there were just certain things we want to get on the record because this is a public hearing. So there's a concern about the lights and potentially we might want to consider limiting the hours of use of this or requiring that the lights just come down. You know, because the lights probably would have the greatest impact and after hours used, if there's any kind of music playing or anything like that, would probably, you know, be a significant disturbance to the neighbors. So again, with just those two things, you know, I think at this point, if I have a motion to adjourn, we'll have any further discussion next month.
Second.
Will we adjourn it, too? What's your motion?
To next month.
The next month.
So the planning board does its action.
Just giving Aziz a little bit of a pat.
So Aziz is making the motion to adjourn?
All right, second.
Next month.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn to December.
Twelve ten.
Item number seven, appeal three six five two, Pierce Gorgo, Leon Pierce and Lauren Gorgo, seventy-one West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling built in the eighteen hundreds and a thirteen-foot front line variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, good evening. We've seen this property before. It's a property that the house is very, very close to the road. We've had discussions about, you know, what some of the things you might be able to do to be able to screen or, you know, to kind of give you a little bit more privacy. One of the things you're now coming in with is some additions to this, to the house. Again, the house was built in the eighteen hundreds, so you're not violating any of the existing setbacks or anything like that, but we are going to just kind of clean up what's there while we're acting on this. So you are looking to do a new front porch. That's the, that's the only thing that's actually going to encroach on the setback more than what, where the house is now. But beyond that, really, it's, it looked like it was going to actually work even better for you. It would, it would give you a little bit more privacy that we knew you guys were looking for with your home there. So are there any comments or questions from board members?
I had a couple of them. One, it was mentioned that the road moved in July two thousand and eight. Can you just explain what happened during that time?
Yeah, they are, they actually just came and shifted the road out probably about fifteen feet. It used to come in really close to our property line and it was really wide, the road, and they came and narrowed it.
So that land, is it a state-owned or is it town-owned?
It's still town-owned, yeah.
Okay. But again, when they moved the road, I mean, they owned the whole property along the whole road, so they just, just moved the blacktop or did they?
They moved, yeah.
They removed the blacktop.
Yep, they moved the blacktop. They planted grass there.
Okay.
So it looks like it's on, it looks like it's our property, but it's really town property.
Right.
Okay.
So that will affect it in the sense that aesthetically, the character of the neighborhood, even by coming out more, is not going to be any different than it was two thousand and eight.
No, yeah, actually you're further, you're further out, so, from the road, your viewpoint.
Yeah, another thing was, where did you put the sign? I remember passing by the place, the sign that the zoning board, which side did you, because you've got like two sides?
It's out, it's out front as you turn the corner on West Hook Road, right by the, by the mailbox.
Okay, wait a minute, okay. Somehow I missed it. That's okay.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Leon Pierce and Lauren Gorgo, seventy-one West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling built in the eighteen hundreds and a thirteen-foot front line variance for a proposed front porch? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Well, that was three of us at least.
Aye.
Sorry.
You want to go?
Yep.
The outbreak of winters having an effect.
Appeal number three six five two, Leon Pierce and Lauren Gorgo, applicant, the applicants are requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling which was built in the eighteen hundreds and a thirteen-foot front line variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. This location at seventy-one West Hook Road in Hopewell Junction, tax map number six three five five dash zero zero dash two zero four one six eight, zoning district R one. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a ten-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling which was built in the eighteen hundreds and a thirteen-foot front line variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as this is an older home and the porch will make the front of the home more symmetrical. The result cannot be achieved without a variance because the house itself requires a variance. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on the impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Leon Pierce and Lauren Gorgo of seventy-one West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, for a ten-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and a thirteen-foot front line variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days, the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant or owner. Second?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, second, sorry.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Yes.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, our last public hearing of the evening, appeal three six five three, Jones, Krista Jones, seventy-seven Logan Berry Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot rear line variance for a proposed addition and a five-foot rear line variance for the roof overhang of the addition pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, as we talked about last month when we, when we were here, you are looking to do an addition to your home so that you can add a commercial kitchen into your garage because you operate a nonprofit where you deliver meals to the families of people who are, where somebody's dealing with cancer.
Yes.
And so there's nothing in the code that restricts this. There's actually nothing in the code that says much of anything about this, but so we're going to deal with the physical aspects of the addition itself, which is, now, when we talked with you last time, you didn't really have it totally mapped out, but in the meantime, you have now hired an architect.
Yeah.
We now have a plan, and so it actually, you've actually turned it around actually a little bit from where it was previously. So at this point, it looks like it works better for us. The overhang, I understand you don't necessarily need it, but because, what it is, is because you're going to back your van or back something up to the, to the garage where this kitchen is, you want to be able to have some, in the event of bad weather, you want to have the overhang to be able to give you walking room.
Yes, but we don't need it, you know, quite as big as originally proposed. We certainly can scale that back.
Okay. How much do you want to scale it back to? That's, it's, you have to tell us.
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we, that's the way that we actually, they thought the plan would work best that way.
Right.
But, you know, if we're going to have any problems with that, you know, the architect said that he'll work with whatever you say from here. If there's any problems with the plan that you see before you, you know, certainly we can make any revisions that are needed.
So then why don't we feel out, see if any of your neighbors here, let's get a sense of that, if there's any objection or any concern about it. Let's start, though, are there any questions or comments from board members?
None.
The only thing I think we discussed was if the house was sold, the variance, you know, a commercial kitchen being in...
But the dilemma is that, as, in a conversation that we had with Mary, there's nothing in the code that prohibits a second kitchen in the house in town. I think this might have been the question that we had for you last time, was whether in the event that Ms. Jones actually sold her house at some point, could we require that the kitchen be removed and?
Well, I think in that regard, I agree with what you're saying, if I'm not jumping the gun, but I think it should be clear in this decision, because it doesn't really address it, and you've mentioned at the beginning of your comments that we're only dealing with the physical aspects. We should probably go one step further and maybe mention that and indicate that this in no way, while we understand will be used for this purpose, that it's not an approval.
Of anybody to operate a business beyond this use?
Business out of this, yeah.
Because it's not a standard kitchen, it's a commercial.
It's a commercial kitchen, so somebody might like to go and use it for the commercial purposes.
Yeah.
I think we should probably put that in the decision. Maybe I'm jumping the gun, but we can think about that comment.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay. All right, we'll work on the resolution in a second. Any other comments or questions from board members? If not, is there anyone here to speak for or against Krista Jones, seventy-seven Logan Berry Court, Hopewell Junction, and her request for a one-foot rear line variance for a proposed addition and a five-foot rear line variance for a roof overhang of the addition? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Okay.
All right, let's...
Whereas this is appeal, well, let me just read it and I'll write something. I haven't finished writing it, but I'll write it out and pass it down to Pam.
You brainstorm out loud and I'll write.
Appeal three six five three by the applicant Krista Jones requesting a one-foot rear line variance for proposed addition and a five-foot rear line variance for the roof overhang of the addition pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance located at seventy-seven Logan Berry Court, Hopewell Junction, and the resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a one-foot rear line variance proposed addition and a five-foot rear line variance for the roof overhang of the addition pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance, and whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on October thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the result cannot be achieved without a variance, the variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Krista Jones, seventy-seven Logan Berry Court, Hopewell Junction, for a one-foot rear line variance for a proposed addition and a five-foot variance for a roof overhang of the addition pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. And be it further resolved that this decision deals only with the physical aspects of the aforementioned addition, and while it's understood that said addition is being put on with a not-for-profit preparation of meals for families stricken by cancer, and this approval should not be construed as an approval of other commercial use of this said addition. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant order.
All in favor? If this one is for second. Okay, let me just make sure I got this here.
Well, I think I said it was...
Be it further that this, this resolution deals only with the physical aspects of the addition to allow for a nonprofit use of the facility and that Ms. Jones provides meals to the families where there is a member stricken with cancer, the approval should not be construed to approve any commercial use of this kitchen.
I'd like to just move the word member of the cancer because before any nonprofit
families where there is a member stricken with cancer, the approval should not be construed to approve any commercial use of this kitchen.
I'd like to just move the word member of the cancer, because before any nonprofit will suffice. I don't think we should be specific as far as...
Well, I think it's that because she's limited this to a couple meal, a couple days a week right now, correct?
Yeah, but again, if she expands it to other, you know, meals for other illnesses, then you're kind of limiting her. So if it's a nonprofit meal delivery, whether it's for cancer or for...
Provides meals to the families where...
People need a medical assistance.
Medical, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you serve leukemia patients.
Correct.
I have no issue with that. So amended, then.
Okay. Ms. Second?
A second is amended.
So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries. All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please pass that down to Pam. All right, that is the end of our public hearings for this evening, so at this point we're just going to be doing reviews, which is probably for all of these, it's the first time we're seeing these applications, so we'll have a discussion with you about what you're looking to do, and then, assuming we feel like we have all the information that we have, we'll schedule you for a public hearing for next month. So the first review is item number nine, Appeal three six five four Seager, Nicholas Seager, fifty-one Stone Ridge Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-eight-one variance for an existing house which was built in the nineteen-eighties with no building permit on record. Mr. Seager, okay. My understanding is that Stone Ridge Lane is a private lane.
Yes, it is.
Okay. You probably bought the property sometime in nineteen-seventy-three, according to records.
Yes.
Built this house...
Between nineteen-seventy-three and nineteen-seventy-seven.
Right, because it's something about you moved in in December of nineteen-seventy-three.
Yes, we did.
And, but, but again, it was built without permits, even though at the time zoning certainly did exist. Apparently there are, now, the issue here is not, the building department will deal with the house itself, okay? The issue here is the fact that this is a private road and it needs driveway access. That's what's actually before this board.
Okay.
For the board's information, there are actually other properties on this private road. Two of them did get two, the same two-eight-one variances, one in nineteen-seventy-eight and one in nineteen-ninety-six, so there is precedent for this board's review of driveway access on this street. So, are there any questions or comments from board members relating to Mr. Seager's application? Again, we're looking at it strictly from a driveway access.
Yeah, I was looking at the map, it's like kind of a, kind of locked, I mean, you guys are, you are in the middle, and you've got all the neighbors around, so how is the subdivision, is it a subdivision or is this a...
Originally, the property was owned by the Heitmans, and they sold my property to Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. Bruno. He had divided all that, but they had created, and it says in my deed that we had a right-of-way in perpetuity over a road called Wood Road, which it was an older road because it used to be farms. The name was only changed when the nine-one-one...
By nine-one-one, yeah, that's what they changed a lot of names.
They forced it to become Stone Ridge Lane. So, but, but in my, when I bought the property, the title insurance company, my lawyer, everybody looked at that and said, no, you have, you know, the right to cross over this land. It never was a problem. When the IBM waterline was put in to resolve the sad pollution of the area, again, it was put in on, you know, on the road, so...
So you have the waterline going up toward your house?
All the way into the house.
But again, as I said earlier, I'm looking at this particular map, I don't, I don't see an access on this map.
It says Stone Ridge, right?
No, no, I see up here, but here's his house.
Yeah.
And this is the thing.
I don't, I think this says Stone Ridge.
Can I come over and point it out?
Come on up.
Is this the access road that you're talking about? Because here's...
So I'm, I'm here, right?
Correct, you're right there.
There is a road that runs like this from my house and then here at the edge, it follows this line and then arches down.
Says, that says Stone Ridge?
Yeah, it says Stone, I'm sorry, so that, that is the road, and then it arches and meets up with Shenandoah Road.
Okay. I can go, you can go back now.
Yeah, I think the trees probably just, with the leaves on it, overhang the...
Yeah, so just, yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it's...
Probably the tunnel effect, but...
Yeah. Now, who owns Shannon, Stone Ridge Road? Who owns it?
Nobody owns it. Each house has...
Access rights.
Has the right-of-way across that property, but that has to have been drawn into the original deed when...
Legally, the answer would be that the different landowners, you cross over, own it, but you have the right of way.
Right.
Okay.
That's what means, right?
Yeah, I raise homeowners have issues.
Somebody owns it.
Okay.
So basically, what I'm trying to get to is that the Stone Ridge ends at your, at the front of your property.
Stone, the road, I guess?
You have the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Okay.
Okay, so now, and you've got property owners on, and you said it kind of loops around, and so you've got different owners, so you don't really own any portion of Stone Ridge, but you have the right of access to the, to this private road.
Yes.
Property owners on each side own the property, so now, why do we have this applicant in front of us if he has no control over this particular...
Because he's got frontage on the road. And so has frontage, but that's why he's asking for the two-eight-one access, because he, it's, it's not as much frontage as normally it would be required, he's...
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
He doesn't have frontage on an approved middle street.
Right.
That's what that variance is.
Oh, I see, okay.
And presumptively, if you have fifteen feet, you have adequate.
So, can you describe the road for me a little bit?
It's roughly fifty feet wide, it's a dirt road. It's, after they put in the waterline, very well constructed. My neighbors and I get together after a variety of storms come by and destroy it, and we rebuild it. Access to the road is done by heavy equipment, fuel trucks, you know, it's, we now have two fire hydrants.
So fuel trucks come in, oil, fuel delivery, and no problem?
Oh, yes.
No problem for a fire truck to come in?
Do people contribute to the maintenance of the road? Do people contribute to...
Yes, we have a formalized road maintenance agreement that's been filed with the county.
It's a private road agreement.
Yes, nice to hear.
Right.
There's another one we deal with where they haven't been able to do that.
And as you know, most lenders won't lend to you unless you have a private road agreement.
This, I understand.
So I'm sure you and your neighbors have all, were all happy when the agreement was finally executed.
Three of them have mortgages, and in the case of the sale of my house, there is no mortgage.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, so can we schedule this for a public hearing for December?
I think so.
Yeah, I'm fine.
So moved.
Motion to advertise?
Second, second. Thank you, ballot favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you next month. Pam will give you your instructions for your sign.
My question, again, before, where are you going to put the sign?
Yeah, that is the question.
Well, that was going to be one of my questions. If I, if I understood it, it's my neighbors who have to comment, correct? Or you want it on the town road?
It's got to be on the, it's got to be all the way out.
Okay, so I'll put it at the, yeah, at the end of Stone Ridge Lane.
That's what makes the most sense.
Where Shenandoah Road, my neighbors have mailboxes. I travel it a lot, so I use a peel box in town, but I'll set it right next to the mailboxes for anyone to see.
Yeah, that would be great.
Perfect, thank you.
That's very similar to what we did, like for, where we put it, had it, put it right out front. Okay, item number ten, Appeal three six five five Jones, Bruce Jones, seventy, Christine Court, Stormville, requesting a special permit to allow an in-home professional office as a mortgage broker pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance. Okay. This is an existing house?
Yes.
Okay. And hours of operation, are you going to have any employees? Give us a little bit of information about the, how are you going to use your home?
It's just, it's just me.
Just you, okay.
Currently, I have an office in Carmel for the last fifteen years. I'm winding down the business, semi-retiring, hopefully moving to warmer weather in a couple of years, and the banking department for New York and Connecticut require me to hang a license somewhere.
Okay.
So I just want to keep it active, just in case, and...
No, that's fine. Is your, no employees, will people be coming to your home?
Very rarely.
Very rarely, do you have parking? How many cars can fit in your driveway?
Twenty.
Twenty, oh, God, okay. Wow, no, no issue there. What, you're going to be putting a sign out on the street?
No.
No? Okay. All right, any comments or questions?
I was looking at the, your application, it seems that you're having your office in the basement, is that, is it just for the purposes of...
When we bought the house, the original appraisal, which is that sketch that you have?
Sure.
The original owner had an office originally in the basement, so when the appraisal was done, that's how he indicated that space to be, it's a finished basement, and it does have an office. I'm not sure if that would be the location I put it, though.
Okay, no, I was just trying to talk about accessibility, if that was the location for visitors and things like that, but, okay.
Is there alternate egress out of the basement?
No.
Can you get outside from the basement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion for, to advertise for a public hearing for December?
So moved. I mean, yeah, motion to advertise, yeah.
Second? Ballot favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month. Please see Pam, and she'll give you your instructions.
And just make sure that the sign is outside so that it's visible to your neighbors.
Okay, we have at least one student, do we have two students that need form sign? Come on up.
The third student needs to wait.
Yeah.
Detention.
Detention.
Hardly, but that's okay. Ah, he knows what meeting he was at, good job. There you go. You're welcome. Item number eleven, Appeal three six five six Castro, Nancy Castro, two-town, Lee Town Road, Stormville, is requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in front of the dwelling, a thirty-foot front-line variance for a proposed, for proposed six-foot tall driveway pillars, a sixteen-foot front-line variance for an existing twenty-four-foot by twenty-four-foot attached garage, an expansion of a non-conforming use for a second-story addition on the exist, on the attached garage, as well as a proposed twelve-foot by twenty-two-foot deck, a eleven-foot and a twelve-foot sideline variance for existing six-foot by eleven-foot and eight-foot by eight-foot sheds pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash one twenty-one, one ninety-four dash ninety-eight, one, one ninety-four dash one twenty-three of the zoning ordinance. Wow, that's a lot going on. All right, let's take a look at what you've got here. So you're looking to do an addition.
Yeah, the house, the house is already in the setback, so the house is, the existing house is non-conforming already.
Okay.
So...
Do you know when this house was built?
No.
No?
You know, I should have it in mind.
It sounds like they're not, the only thing that's new in terms of the setback area would be the driveway pillars, everything else is either on existing footprint or in the back, so it's increasing the non-conforming use.
No, there's a proposed deck.
Yeah, but that's on the back.
Nineteen-fifty, all right, we know, your house was built in nineteen-fifty.
Yeah, I'm not the homeowner, I'm the, I work with the architect, we're representing
Oh, okay, all right.
Nineteen-fifty.
So you are, I'm sorry, who are you?
I'm Sonia Idelson, I work with Michael Picarello, architect.
Oh, I thought you were Nancy.
No, I'm not Nancy.
Do you file the application?
I'm just representing them.
Okay.
So she, the owner wants to convert the existing garage into a kitchen and then add a master bedroom on top.
Yeah, for the record, we have a letter from the applicant saying that Michael Picarello...
Yeah, I work with, I work with Michael.
Okay, so we have a letter giving...
Yeah, so, the way we do it...
But this is to the building department and engineering department, I mean, this authorization, this part returns.
It's fine.
Okay.
The application apparently was prepared by the architect, the application itself, as a professional agent.
Okay.
So it's a new garage or it's an existing?
No, the garage is existing, and she wants to convert the garage into a kitchen and then add a second floor. The garage is the only part of the house that doesn't have a second floor. The, in the future, she wants to build a detached garage, but this is going to be inside the setbacks, but we weren't sure because of the whole non-conformity if we also need a variance for a detached garage that is going to be in the setbacks.
Now, you say in the future, what does in the future mean?
I don't know, because she keeps changing her mind.
Well, I think what you need to do is limit your application to what you actually are going to do to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to apply, what we did is, just not to have to wait the whole month, we already applied for the interior renovation of this part of the addition, which is, I think the building specialist is going to be ready in a week or so. In the meantime, you know, we're just going through this variance, and, and we're preparing the plans for the detached garage. I think we're going to submit the application within, you know, a month or so.
For a detached garage?
Yeah, and for the...
But the detached garage, you're saying that it's going to be within the setback requirements?
Right, so...
Okay, well, how, the only other concern we have is, if it's a detached garage, how big is it going to be compared to the footprint of the existing house?
Because it was thirty percent, yeah, we'll, we'll make it comply, absolutely, yeah.
But the only concern with that is it's a non-conforming, I think that's the only issue, the increase in non-conforming use.
It's not a non-conforming use, it was a setback.
Well, that's what, but I don't think any of this other stuff's an issue yet, that's what I'm saying.
You're doing a second-story addition, then that's...
My, it's a detached garage.
Right, okay.
And a deck, I mean, why, I'm not sure why it's in front of us yet, right?
For the deck, I was told that the deck...
She showed it on the plan, the plan showed all this stuff.
I underst, that's what I'm sort of trying to figure out, just in the future, when is this going to happen? I'm not sure what's going on.
We, we, we're going to do the plans and apply for the building permit for detached garage, for everything.
Okay.
We just brought it to your attention because it wasn't clear to us whether or not we needed a variance for that. I, we, at first, we didn't know that we needed a variance for the deck, even though that isn't the back of the house, but I was told that because it's attached to the house, it's adding to the non-conformity, so that's why we applied for a variance.
Where is this proposed deck going to be? On the back rear of the house or on the sides?
No, on the back.
On the back, okay.
So do, we don't need a variance for that?
Well, again, you're, you need a variance for the house itself.
Right.
And because the house is with, is, is within this...
Yes.
Has less of a setback than what's required, any addition to it still requires the variance just because it's, the house itself doesn't meet the required setback.
Yeah, we understand that, that's why we applied for the deck, but then, the fact of the detached garage, even though it's going to be, not inside, it's going to be within the legal setback, we still wanted to put in the sideline for you to see it and make sure that there is no issues with that.
Okay, the, what I'm still trying to get at, so there's a, it's a proposed deck, the deck doesn't exist, the garage does exist, but does the second story of the garage exist?
No.
No.
Okay, so that's a proposed...
That's the only addition.
That's a proposed second story, okay. All right, and then the, the stone pillars, again, my, because these are six-foot, that's why we have to do a variance for these? Right? Okay.
Yeah, but, like the driveway...
Do we know what these pillars are going to look like? I mean, what are they going to be made out of?
Stone.
They're going to be stone?
But the driveway really drops like five feet, so, you know, because it's going to be like twenty feet in, it's not going to be like six feet tall, then, you know, like on the, on the driveway, on the...
Are they going to have lights on them, though, or are they going to be, and how wide are they going to be?
I think she wants like two by two, by, no.
Oh, okay, so it's just a simple...
Yeah, maybe thirty by thirty, yeah, like, yeah, she, eventually she probably wants to put a gate, so...
Eventually she wants to put a gate?
Yeah.
Well, there's a difference between six-foot pillars and a six-foot fence or a six-foot gate.
Well, no, the gate won't be six feet. I think the gate will be less than four.
It's gonna be four feet or less?
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure that's in the...
But she, that's, that's another plan for the future. That is definitely future because we didn't hear much about it.
All you're here for right now is pillars. I just wanna make sure you know, to make sure that she knows.
Yes.
The, if she's putting a gate in it, that gate cannot be above four feet.
Okay, and what about the pillars? Like, um, I know people put like lanterns on top?
Right, like...
Do we have to ask for a variance for...
Well, the, that's all part of the pillar.
It's part of it.
If you're gonna put, it's gonna be a six-foot stone pillar and then a light on top of it, so you're gonna really be seven feet? You're gonna be at least another foot higher than?
So should we, should we say like the pillars are gonna be five feet and then we put like a foot of light?
Whatever you're gonna do, describe it to us and then take the total height.
Okay, yeah, because we weren't even thinking about, she said pillars and we, we didn't really develop the, the, that part.
We, we wanna make sure, I mean, pillars add value to the home. It makes it look nice as long as it's nicely done and it's not overdone.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's why we're just trying to get a sense of really what are you proposing to do here?
Okay.
But, you know, two-foot by two-foot, even three-foot by three-foot, you know, something like that is, is, that's, that's not unreasonable, okay?
No, thirty by, yeah.
Yeah, we had one...
But the light, the, the variance, the top, the six-foot has, if you're gonna put a light, it has to include that.
That's good to know. I, you know, I didn't even think about that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had one years ago. I think I was the only one back then. By the time he was done, it was like above the height of the clock.
Yeah.
So, no, we need to know the total height and what's going on. And, yeah, he didn't think he can get a building permit for that.
And again, we have to, we have to do a public hearing on this. The neighbors may wanna know.
Yes.
What is it gonna look like?
Yes.
They wanna make sure it's gonna be reasonable for, reasonable for what the neighborhood has.
What I was trying to say also is that either the, the, the topography...
Right, the, the, these are steep slopes.
Really dives down, so, um, so it's not gonna be so visible, but do we have to like provide you with a sketch before the next meeting?
It would be helpful because again, your, the neighbors might wanna know what's it gonna look like.
Okay.
All right, so a, a sketch would really, really be helpful.
Like before the meeting, should I, should we?
No, you can just bring it to the meeting.
Just to the meeting, okay.
Bring it to the public hearing. That would be fine.
So, in other words, um, the, the detached garage that is gonna be within the, the legal setbacks, we don't need a variance for it?
You may need a variance for the size of it, though.
Depends on the size.
If, if we go over?
If you go over, yeah.
Right.
If you keep it seven fifty or less, you'll be okay, I think.
So it's a thirty percent, right?
No, there's, if you go above seven hundred and fifty square feet, then you look at the percentages. But if, as long as you stay seven fifty or less, then you're okay as well.
Yeah, so, so she does twenty-four by twenty-four, that's fine. That doesn't need a variance.
Uh, I think she wants to...
She's gonna go a little bit bigger than that?
Then it's sixty percent of the footprint of the dwelling.
Right.
Sixty percent?
Yeah.
And not the square footage, the footprint.
Okay.
But now is she converting the garage, the existing garages are being converted into
We, we're increasing the, the existing footprint.
Right, so you're increasing it.
Well, you're not, yeah, well...
Oh, because a foot of habitable space or?
No, it's, it's just a footprint of the house.
It just says footprint, so I don't think it really is changing it. I don't, that's true.
Yeah, you're right. Oh, yeah, that's true. It's not, it's not.
So, sixty percent, so the, the new garage doesn't have to be bigger than sixty percent?
It's not allowed to be bigger.
You're allowed, you're allowed the...
It's a cap, it's a cap.
It has to be less than sixty percent.
Right.
You're allowed the bigger of sixty percent of the footprint or seven hundred and fifty square feet, the bigger one.
Okay.
If she wants it bigger than that, then you're gonna have to include it in the variance.
Okay.
Okay, can you, I can't even see, where are these sheds? Oh, here's one. And here's one. So one is, are they, were they pre-existing?
Yes, those, those were existing.
When? Any idea?
One of them, the small one, she said it was a duck house. Whatever that means.
Duck house.
Duck, oh, duck house.
Yes.
For the pond.
But there's no chickens there, right? No chickens in this house?
No chickens, no.
Okay.
It tastes like chickens.
And it, she also wants a pool. Is any restriction for the pool size?
She wants a pool too? Wow.
What should do, hit the lottery?
Wow.
No, she doesn't need a variance. She needs a twenty-five-foot setback.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, the pool is in the back.
And make sure the patio is within the appropriate setback as well, but other than that, it, it's...
Hold on, are we getting too close to lot coverage? What, how big is this lot?
Right, right.
Oh, it's like four acres.
Well, this lot is huge.
Yeah, it's huge.
All right.
This lot's huge.
Yeah, yeah, the problem is the front.
Perfect, because she's gonna be, where, where does she have a flattened up area probably on this lot?
She does, she does, yeah.
These are the topo lines here? I mean...
It is flat, right, right where she wants to put the new garage.
This, this property goes up, you know, forty feet, or goes down actually from the road down forty feet.
It's only allowed six percent block coverage in that zone.
Six percent.
For building area.
Yeah, but six percent of four, four acres, forty...
Forty times four, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty big.
I think we got that one covered.
Yeah, the parcel size is three point six acres, to be exact.
Thank you.
Well, because part of it is in, is in Putnam County. I think part of the law, the, the lot is Putnam County and part of Duchess or something like that?
Pardon me?
Part of the lot is Putnam County?
Part of Duchess, she's saying, I don't know.
Well, then, we've gotta look at different notice here.
Okay.
No?
Do we have to do a...
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused. I, I, I heard something like that and I...
Is it?
Pardon me?
Part of it is in...
Are you opposed structures in Putnam County or are they all in?
No, 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 no.
No, there are many fish.
All the buildings are in Duchess, but the, the lot is so big, it just goes, the, the part of it, I think is...
We did the county?
Okay.
Okay, but do we, do we now have to circulate the lead agency or do we have to do a coordinated review now?
Yep, we should.
Yeah.
They have, they have to have the opportunity.
They have to have the opportunity to come in. I agree with John.
And it's a type-two action. Does that still require a secret?
Even for a...
Type-two does not require a secret, so why are you doing a coordinated review?
Yeah, but you have to advertise it and you have to tell the adjoining municipality of the application.
That we did.
But they did, they did the...
Well, I, I think we did the county, I think.
We did the county and Putnam. We did Duchess County and Putnam County.
But did we do the town?
The town that...
In Putnam?
No.
Yeah, so we might wanna...
But that's how the public hearing comes about, right?
We don't have the planning, yeah, we don't have the public hearing.
Again, looking at the map, I mean, it just says the county line is at the border of the, of the two, I mean, their property sets the county line, so that on the other side is the county line.
See, this is it. This is the property. This is the property and this is the line, so this isn't Duchess.
No, I thought this was, I thought this was the property, this was...
No, that's the line.
No, that's the county.
County line. Ah, okay, yeah, so it is in county, it is in, it is in, uh, Putnam County.
It doesn't say which, yes, it is, town of Kent.
Kent, town of Kent.
So we did that?
So someone look at it.
All right, so, what do we have to do here?
We're gonna make sure that we send our application to both the county of Putnam and the town of Kent.
Okay. But we don't have to do coordinated review or do we?
I think we should announce our intention.
To do lead agency?
Right. Just to give the other...
So we should circulate for lead, we'll, we'll announce our intention to circulate and, and we'll circulate for it and...
That's exactly what Pam and I just talked about, yes.
Give thirty days for them to respond, which would mean that we can't do the public hearing next month, right? When is December? No, we have thirty days.
I think this is a project that's gonna take a little time anyway.
Yeah, even though, I mean, look at this, I mean, like...
Yeah, but it's, it's, we gotta follow a secret. We gotta follow the laws, so, um...
We don't, and then somebody objects, where is she gonna be?
That, that, yeah, then you're in worse trouble. All right, so...
So what is the, the point is that because the whole lot, because I see that it just almost, it says...
Yeah, the county line bisects the property in two.
It just calls them like two parcels, it's, you know, it's like, because she owns everything, even though she's only using the Putnam County section.
But the property is almost bisected equally, the two places by the county line.
The improvements are in Duchess County.
Right.
We're in Duchess County, but, but because the property is also in Putnam County, we have to give them notice of the improvements that are being proposed here.
And most likely, they're gonna look at it and say, no, all the improvements are in Duchess, we don't care, but...
We have to notice.
We can't take that risk.
And, and that takes another month?
Well, we have to give them thirty days to respond, so, and thirty days from today. Our, our meeting in December is earlier than the, tonight's meeting, so that's why we don't do...
It's only twenty-eight days.
Right, but we, but we gotta notice it.
I agree, I agree.
Even if we get the notice out tomorrow, it's, you know...
It's too short, no, it's too short, right.
All right, so do I have a, well, are there any other questions or comments here?
Do you look at the generator? We have to decide if that's gonna need a variance also because technically it does not meet the fifty-foot setback, but it's not in front of the house.
Okay, there's also a proposed generator here? Where is the generator gonna be? I mean, I, I have to be honest, this is like impossible to read.
Oh, wait, don't you have a different? Oh.
We do, but everything is so crammed in there with all the lines, it's very hard to read.
I got the big one.
Oh, is it different?
Well, it's easier to read.
It's easier to read?
There's a lot going on in the drawing.
I, I, yeah, I feel that I think we have, we need more, I mean, more itemized, more detail of what's going on because we, I've been hearing this conversation and to me, it's not very clear of what is being requested and what is actually happening in the end. So I, you know, we need to go back to this application and make sure that it's all clearly identified.
We submitted a list of all the documents we're discussing, that some of them we weren't sure if we need them, so that we'll leave that part of the discussion.
Yeah, so I would suggest that you, you know, revisit it. Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the, you know, right now, going to editing.
Yeah, that, that looks like it's at least easier to read.
A kidney-shaped pool.
There's a, no, go ahead, there's actually a pool. Oh, so the pool is here.
Yes.
Again, again, so these, these are not in the setback, so this, this is technically okay, but we just put in the plan for you to see because we weren't sure if, you know...
Well, we gotta know what we're approving. That's why you can't put in there and then say we approved it. You gotta make a specific application.
Right.
What, what we're sure we need is a, a, a variance is...
In front of the dwelling.
This addition on the second floor here, that this is the setback line, the fifty feet.
You need to decide. That's why I said at the beginning, my comment, she's saying the future. You're gonna make a specific application so we know what we're considering and decide what you're going for, and I guess if it's, well...
John, do we have to worry about segmentation though if she's looking to do something? We should be looking at everything here.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, they need to be clear on what they, because...
What they're asking for. I mean, if the new proposed garage is gonna be built five years from now, we're not asking for that.
But if it's within five years, we should be looking at it.
But the new proposed garage is, is...
Well, we could say that, I guess. It has to be built with the next amount of time. I don't know.
But you're telling me, you're telling me that this actually doesn't need a variance because...
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know the size of it.
What, it, thinking that is the right size, just for location-wise.
Right.
Location-wise, she's okay, right?
Yeah, so here's the setback one.
Right.
And here's the setback.
That's phase three.
So she's okay.
Phase three, we got...
Okay, where is the six-foot fence?
All, all the way.
In the front? It's there now or it's proposed?
It starts here.
It, it says, well, it doesn't say proposed. It says new six-foot-tall deer fence, two feet inside a long property. It should say proposed.
Okay, why is, why is she asking for six feet?
Deer fence. Deer fence. She wants a six-foot-tall deer fence, two feet inside the property.
If we do four feet up to the front of the property...
Right, to, to the house, to the...
To the back of the house and then they, they...
To the front or the back?
Then you're fine, then you don't need that variance.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we should have a sit-down during the day with staff and with the professional and try to...
I agree, I totally agree.
You know, go, go through some of the issues.
What, what is your, your question? Because I can, I can do your work.
My question, we sum up right here.
Shaded, shaded, no. This needs, this needs a variance because it's, it's attached to the house. This needs a variance because it's a second floor on the, on the existing non-conforming house. Shaded, no garage, shaded pool, we didn't know, so we, but it's not existing, it's gonna be there once we...
In other words, I guess what she's asking is if, if, if the pool and the proposed new garage are within the setback requirements, they never need a variance, and they meet the size requirements, they don't ever need a variance for it, so we don't have to consider that.
Right.
That's your question.
We brought it, we brought to your attention because we didn't want to...
We need to consider your pillars because they're higher than four feet. We need to consider your additions to the house because that's non-conforming.
Right?
Yeah.
Do you show the dimension?
And the issue is the generator?
And we're talking you out of the six-foot fence to make it a four-foot fence up to the rear line of the house, right?
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll...
Well, that's what I'm saying. Does that go to the front of the house? Or I'm confused?
It, it comes up to here.
Okay, then that's the front.
We'll bring it to the back of the house, so...
Okay.
Start it at the back of the house.
The six feet will start at the back of the house.
So we'll, we'll, we'll do four feet up to here.
Correct.
And then six feet.
Yeah, and we don't need that.
So then we're near it. So we do need a variance for the six-foot pillar, pillars that are here.
Be sure to mention.
Here and here, here and here.
Seventy-two inch, you say, seventy-two inch stone pillar, yes, that's the dimension now.
So, um, so...
But is that a wall associated with those pillars too?
Well, there's an existing stone wall, so we're extending it.
She says extend, she puts extend and stone wall to meet the new pillars.
Yes.
But how tall is the stone wall gonna be?
It's just gonna be there.
Okay, all right. As long as it's four foot or less?
About two, three?
Yeah, they're same height as we did.
Yeah, we don't, we take this down, so if you have a verbal response. Okay.
Yeah, well, next, next meeting, oh, that's what I was just asking you, if you needed us to provide, like, with an update, set, you know, of the plan.
What would be helpful is would be, would be pictures or drawings of each of these things. Pictures of the sheds, pictures of the, you know, give us the existing garage, so that we know, you know, it's only one story, what's it, you know, what's it gonna look like with the second story?
Basically, has your client ever talked to you about any idea of the future of subdivision? Because, is there any thoughts about sub-rotting the property at all?
No, I, I don't know.
And we started this discussion with Mary's question, whether we should be considering the generator as part of this?
Yeah, okay, so she wants the generator really, like, kind of, close to the front of the house.
We could, why in the front?
It's not really the front, it's because it's, it's like next to the side of the house, but the, because the front, yeah.
On the side of it.
Okay, so it would be like where an air conditioning unit would be?
It's within the fifty-foot setback is the required, just to hear.
Oh, okay.
And there's a four-foot fence in front of it.
You could just move it back a little bit.
You did the drawing?
Yes. I mean, this is based, we, we used, part of it is the surveyor's, um, plan, then we, we did the, the, our part.
So it's forty-three, you're forty-four feet back now, so if you go back around the fifty feet, then we don't have to worry about it, right?
Right.
I mean, we'll push it back. And the building inspector told me, you just put whatever you want, and then he didn't tell me what to do. So she wanted a thing in the front, so we just put, but if you say it's a town, you just, that, that's-
It would be easier if you had it fifty feet.
The generator in.
Yeah.
Who's the in-line surveyor? Who, who did the in-line survey?
The, um, the, oh, you know what, it's, it's, I, I have the original.